Okay, good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, December 21st. Wow, we're getting really close to the big holiday, 2016. It's nine o'clock and we're here at 555 Court Street Northeast in the Senator hearing room. If you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's amazing how within one week, I think it started snowing right after our board session last week on Wednesday and come in today and it's just like-
It was a little slick, just so you know.
It was foggy this morning, icy foggy out south when I drove down to the courthouse to work out and actually slid on Cole Road in my car, so.
Slow down.
Okay, so we have one person signed up for public comment. David, welcome. You want to join us over off the side here?
Commissioners, my name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for special needs population in Salem area and I'd like to see more police departments at the state fair because a lot of them jump over to the fence for the state fair and the county fair, try to get in, they're not paying. So I'm asking the fair board, well, get more cops on the street for the state fair and the county because a lot of them are taking advantage of the systems in the wrong way. So I'm thinking about the city and the county would fund the program for the state fair, more funding for that, for the police departments, for the fair. That's all I'm asking, for the county commissioner will approve it for next year.
Thank you, David. It's good to see you today.
Thank you, Commissioners. And yesterday, I got a meeting with the mayor of Salem. I am going to be advisor to the city council on the human rights for Salem area. I just got appointed yesterday to be advisor to the new mayor of Salem on this. I'm going to work with both and the county.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to go right into our very long consent calendar and it looks like it's your turn to read because you are the one that's here.
Looks like I don't have any choice, but, and I'm happy to do that. Don't ever misread that.
I know you are.
So Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, under Board of Commissioners, we approved the contract for services with Morningside Research and Consulting Incorporated for $163,000 to provide management and organization review of the health department. Business Services, approved an order appointing Alan Haley to Marion County Retirement Plans Committee. Alan's the director of our Public Works Department. Approved order for reimbursement and authorized payment of $2,700 to Jamie Goldberg for defense costs. Health, approved Amendment 11 with the Oregon Health Authority for Public Health Service Agreements to add $12,600 to provide specialized technical equipment for the women, infants and children, the WIC program. Information Technology, approved the GSA price agreement with Serium Network for $118,112 for an integrated phone system for the Marion County Psychiatric Crisis Center. Public Works, approved the letter of commitment for the city of Turner's Hazard Mitigation Grant Application. Schedule a public hearing on February 15th, 2017 for Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Case 16001, Gray, Clerks File 5718. Schedule a public hearing on January 11th, 2017 for the Special Assessment of Open Space Case 16001, Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon, Clerks File 5720. And a third one, schedule a public hearing also on January 11th, 2017 for the, it's almost the same, for the Special Assessment of Open Spaces Case 16002, Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon, Clerks File 5721.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion?
I don't have any.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're done with the consent calendar, we're going to move right into action. See, I told you I wouldn't be perfect today. Can't even say-
You made it six minutes.
Trying to be perfect the last two weeks so I could get at least two out of 52. Okay, so our first action item is, under the Board of Commissioners, consider approval of resolution adopting the stepping up initiative. And I believe Sheriff Myers and District Attorney Walt Beglow are here. And Anne Marie, if you want to join us off to the side there, welcome.
For the record, my name is Jason Myers. I'm Marion County Sheriff and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about this resolution for the stepping up initiative. Maybe I'll start with a little background on what the stepping up initiative is. It's a national initiative around reducing the number of individuals who are suffering from a mental health condition or substance abuse and diverting them away from county jails or the criminal justice system. And as you know, here in Marion County, we've had about a 10-year track record of working in this area collaboratively with the prosecutor's office, with health department and other law enforcement agencies to really address this issue that's really a nationwide issue that has driven up the amount of individuals in jail who are mentally ill. So this initiative, well, this resolution would be stating that our county would be making this a priority. We have done so, so it's really about kind of recognizing the efforts and then moving forward. What are the best practices? What are the things that we're doing as leaders to be engaged in this issue? And are we looking at the next steps for our system? I'm just going to highlight a couple of the items that is in this resolution. One is to engage our Public Safety Coordinating Council and its efforts to reduce the number of individuals with mental illness from entering the criminal justice system. We're going to convene a stepping up work group that's going to look at the six key areas that are identified in the stepping up initiative. Those key areas are checking our leadership's commitment, conducting timely screenings and assessments, and sharing that information with decision makers so we can make better decisions earlier when justice-involved mentally ill folks enter the system. How we conduct a comprehensive analysis and inventory of the services we do, and then prioritizing policy, practice and funding improvements, and then finally just tracking our progress. Are we doing good with this effort? And then included in this resolution is to continue our collaboration with law enforcement, prosecution, public health to attempt to fill in the gaps when we see those gaps. Obviously, we've been creative over the 10 years. This isn't all county general fund. We look for other funding sources, grants, other agencies and nonprofit organizations to help us with this. And then tracking all of the data and information systems and then reporting back to you as the board and the community on our efforts. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to some of our stakeholders. We have District Attorney Walt Beglow here, as you mentioned, as well as Anne Marie Banfield from the health department to talk about their involvement in this initiative.
Thank you. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Latimer. I'm Walt Beglow, privileged to serve as the elected district attorney here in Marion County. And I guess the best starting point is I'm just really pleased to be up here with the sheriff and Anne Marie Banfield from our health department, teaming up together around behavioral health. I think that's kind of the backbone of all of this is, this is some of the most important work we can do, not only in public safety, but in public health arena. And as all of those efforts come together, we're going to do better by those impacted by mental illness in our community who find themselves in the justice system. I always like to describe our work, and I think the stepping up initiative will bring us together, is kind of like looking at a yardstick. The continuum of services, the places where individuals are impacted, is stretched out along this yardstick and we're trying to address all those different important touch points. And our jail is one of the most important touch points there. And so I think that's the energy behind stepping up initiative here and this resolution. We are hard at work in many different touch points along this yardstick right now. Very pleased and with the support of the board and Mr. Latimer, we just started a new position in the district attorney's office that's funded through the Oregon Health Program and through Marion County Health Department. At one of those critical points when mentally ill come into the system, and that's that charging point, they've been arrested and they're getting booked into our jail, we've developed a position that we work with qualified mental health professionals and the staff and Anne Marie to just make better decisions. And if those decisions get that individual into the justice system, we're going to look at it quicker and with more information and make sure an individual is in our jail or is charged with a crime, is treated with dignity and respect and gets the right resources. And that might be in the community and not in our jail, and that's kind of the goal. So that position started yesterday, or this week, yeah, Monday, and we've already identified a whole number of cases and Anne Marie leaned over this morning and said, we've already got a couple, we think we can get out of the state hospital and maybe into community restoration. And just that kind of special collaborative attention is going to be impactful. So I'm just here to support this. I know the sheriff and I and many others are part of several efforts to look at these different touch points and we're going to keep you up to speed as we go through all this because I think it's going to be a positive impact on the work that we do. So thanks for your support of this resolution as we go forward.
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Latimer. I'm Anne Marie Banfield with the health department. I'm the program supervisor for acute and forensic behavioral health. So I serve everyone between an institution, whether that's the jail, the state hospital or an acute care setting, to an outpatient service, which means I'm in a unique position to see the whole spectrum of services that are going on when someone's in a crisis, from showing up at the emergency room or coming into our 24/7 crisis center to having contact with law enforcement. I oversee the mobile crisis teams as well as we have diversion programs that we can get people in the moment they walk in our door. And one of the exciting things about the work that we've been doing for the last 10 years with our sheriff's office and with other law enforcement agencies in our community is that we are immediately identifying and looking for ways that we can serve the residents of Marion County better. And one of the things I'm really proud of, both as working as a Marion County employee but also as a Marion County resident, is that we're not waiting for people to tell us what needs to be done. We're looking at what their gaps are and what we can do with the resources we have to really make better services, faster decisions on how we can serve folks. One of the things that is driving this is that we've been looking at the jail for the last, well, since about 2005, and how can we reduce the number of people going in that are really going in because of their mental illness? And how do we get them back into the community mental health system and get the services and treatment that they need? And we've made some great strides. We've reduced the number of people coming through our programs and through other programs that the sheriff's office partners with. We've reduced by, I believe it's about 5,000 a year, how many people are going through our jail booking system. And that's great because we're getting them in the right door at the right time and we keep looking for opportunities to do this. And I think the stepping up initiative really highlights all the work that we've been doing and all the ways that we're looking to move forward in continuing to provide good coordinated care in this community.
Well, I'm thinking about something and I like to put people on the spot, so this is swell. No, I'm especially sensitive to this issue. Even before, I'm going to tell you a story, even before I knew that too many people were going to the jail that didn't belong there, plus it's bad for them and it's certainly bad for the community that is taking space of someone who does need to be there. But I want to tell you a little true story scenario and then just tell me, what I'd like to hear is how it would be so much different after this program and in Marion County. So the story is, close relative threatened the police, more brandished a pitchfork and was arrested and just having a total mental health crisis and then was simply lodged in the county jail for a month until moved to the state hospital, but nothing done. So what I'm asking, so if this, right in sublimity, oh, it could be me, let's put me there. Tell me what's going to happen. It could. Tom arrests me in sublimity and then you take over. What would happen to me under this new program that wouldn't have?
Well, if we have a mobile crisis team on duty and if we even don't, most of our deputies are CIT trained, crisis intervention trained, so first and foremost, they're going to de-escalate the situation and not try to escalate it. And then they're going to look for options outside of arrest. So if an individual's committed a crime and it's an egregious crime, then obviously they're going to be arrested, they'll be assessed at the jail and then they'll be referred to the correct service if it's a mental health related issue. Along with that, there may or may not-
Held at the jail until this evaluation's done or where are they, where am I at?
It really depends. On the front end of the system, it may be that you don't get arrested and that you're actually referred to a service that is going to help you with your mental health issue.
And I got to interrupt again. Will somebody actually make contact with me or find me or?
Yes. The mobile crisis team is a deputy and a clinician that are together. They're going to come out and talk to you and determine what's going on and if they can refer you to a resource, that is their first inclination versus arrest. So that's the front end. If it moves beyond that, if the crime is egregious enough and the individual does get arrested, go to jail, there's another assessment that's done there and then decisions that are made by the district attorney's office in conjunction with our team that are doing both the mental health assessment and the risk assessment. So we have kind of catch points all along through the system with the intention that if somebody is suffering from a mental health condition, we get them the right help at the right time so that they don't remain in jail as you just described because people do not get better when they're in there for a lengthy period of time and we're not addressing their true need, which is a mental health issue.
Mary had some special service she's going to give me, so I want to hear about it.
So hopefully Mobile Crisis or one of our CIT teams is going to show up. And I think what the sheriff was trying to point out is if there's been an issue where somebody's had a very dangerous situation and there has to be charges, they're going to go to the jail. But my staff are in the jail seven days a week and they're going to get in a valve the next day.
Great.
And so we're going to be on top of it. We've got prescribers at the jail. We're going to see what we can do to get services started immediately. And my staff are going to work with the district attorney's office to say, what are the right services for this person? If it's not egregious, if it's something where somebody was scared but nobody was hurt, there's not really a significant charge that can happen, one of the things we're going to look at is this person eligible for a police officer custody? If that happens, they're going to go to the hospital, they're going to immediately get them on a health evaluation and could end up on a hospital on a hold into our psych unit where immediately we're going into the right door because you're going right to the psych unit to get the right services, get the right things wrapped around you. But maybe it isn't raised to that level. Maybe this person can still have choice and in Oregon, civil rights is a very high bar. So what we're going to do, psychiatric crisis center, we're open 24 hours a day. We can wrap services around somebody the moment they walk in our door. We have a prescriber and this is really unique to our county. There are very few counties who have psychiatric prescribing in the crisis center. I can get somebody in the door. If my doc is there, she'll see somebody same day or I can get them an appointment within two to three days. And we're going to have case management service that will come out to their home and provide them with services right there.
So my point you've made, and thank you so much, that this is a whole bunch better than chunking them in the jail for a month or so and especially after just taking the annual tour of our county jail. I didn't want to spend a month there. An hour was fine. Chair Cameron, if I could, I want to, I'll just go ahead and make the motion and if you'd like to say something, I would approve a resolution that adopts the stepping up initiative.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? I just wanted to point out that, Anne Marie, your comment was, it highlights the work that we've already been doing and this is more of a national trend, this stepping out initiative is a national thing, that we are kind of just layering over what we've already been doing, the great work here in Marion County. To the Commissioner's point, I actually got to be on a ride along where he was acting out and, not him, but-
Someone very similar, I'm sure.
And actually got to see the mobile crisis team come from, it was a Salem police officer, I don't know if I've shared this with you and I've shared it with the sheriff. The mobile crisis team, we are in Aurora and the mobile crisis team from Salem Police Officer with one of your people came all the way up to Aurora, defused, first of all, the deputy had defused the situation long before they got there, but then turned it over to them and gave them all the information and then follow-up was done for that person. And it was just one of those, nobody went to jail. It wasn't, you know, a serious crime, but there was some domestic, you know, things that were going on. So it was a great opportunity for me to see boots on the ground firsthand, how these types of things are already working out in Marion County and in that case avoided a jail time for somebody. And I think you mentioned 5,000 people that we've avoided the jail. And in our tour yesterday, that was one of the questions that, you hear about DOC and the female population being really pushed up there in Marion County. It ebbs and flows, but we don't have that particular problem right now with the growing population there, so. Thing else before we vote?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And your resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service.
Truly, thank you.
Okay, that takes care of that. Our next item of business is business services. Consider an approval, an order revising policy number 602, nondiscrimination policy and procedures. And Colleen is with us today and Gloria, we have legal counsel's name by the side of there too, so you may have some things to say. Welcome, Colleen.
Good morning Chair, Commissioner. Colleen Kuntch Chafin's, Business Services Director. Gloria and I will be discussing with you, asking you to consider the approval of revising policy 602, which is our nondiscrimination policy. And there are some procedures with minor revisions as well. We provided you with a redlined copy of the changes that we made and the primary changes were basically adding a whistleblower section to that and due to some recent changes in the law, Gloria's going to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Gloria Roy, County Council. The Oregon Legislature in 2016 adopted House Bill 4067, which was in response to a situation regarding a former governor and the release of emails by a state employee. That state employee then was subsequently disciplined and/or charged, charges were later dropped. But the legislation kind of clarified both an employee's rights to be able to speak up if there's a good faith belief that there's a violation of a state or federal law, as well as putting some limitations on that. Marion County already has a strong policy and procedure that prohibits discrimination and prohibits retaliation against discrimination. So this is just to comply with the law, specifically calling out the whistleblower aspect of that. And that is someone who in good faith discloses lawfully accessed information and that's the catch-all. You can't get into information you're not supposed to have access to and then try and claim whistleblower. And you're disclosing it to either a law enforcement agency, a state or federal regulatory agency, your manager or your attorney for the organization. Basically, you're speaking up and trying to get an issue resolved by the appropriate party. Whistleblower is not, you're taking the information and going to the newspaper. You're going to authorities who have some ability to respond to the situation. And again, it's lawfully accessed information. So when an employee does that, they have certain protections, just as they would now under the law, to not be retaliated against in their employment. There's a second piece to this and that's informing employees of their rights should they be charged outside of the employment context in a civil or criminal matter like this one individual did, that it's an affirmative defense to say, no, I reported this to an appropriate authority, I had to lawfully access the information and I had a good faith and reasonable belief that there was a violation of law. So we're adding this to our policy. The new law takes effect January 1st of 2017, which is why we're bringing it before you today. And it's going to follow the same procedures that we would for human resources in the business services department, investigating complaints of potential retaliation or whistleblower retaliation. And should it rise to the level, just like any other misconduct where we think there might be a criminal aspect to that, we would refer it to the district attorney's office. If you have any other questions on that, it's, other than that, it's just a little cleanup.
I just didn't hear you right, Gloria. Did you say January 1st?
2017, yes.
So just a couple of weeks, okay. I just didn't see it in here fast.
These changes will take effect upon adoption by the Board of Commissioners today.
Yeah.
So it's just, the law will take effect January 1st where you're required to have it in your policies by then.
Okay. Good?
All right.
We've talked about this before, so.
So Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion, we do approve of the order revising policy 602, nondiscrimination policy and procedures.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Still under business services, consider approval of the provider agreement with Regents Blue Cross Blue Shield of Oregon for $2,092,460 to provide insurance services to Marion County employees. And Justine Flora.
Good morning. It sounds like a lot of money when you say it out loud like that.
It's probably not all of it either.
So what we're here for, you may remember back in September, I came forward with several recommendations that you approved, one of which was to change the health plan administration from modA to Regents as the new health insurance provider for both the PPO and the high deductible health plans for Marion County employees. And before you hear is the contract, which allows us to actually contract with Regents Blue Cross so that they can start providing the services as of January 1st.
So just a quick question, what is the 2 million? It does sound like a lot of money because it is a lot.
It is, yes.
2,92,460, is that for the entire year?
Yes, that's the premium and that's based on per employee, per month rate multiplied by the number of employees who we estimate will be covered under that program.
John, do you have any comments on that? It's a big number.
Yes, Mr. Chair, but this is really a very good proposal. It's one we've worked through for a number of months and it will provide, I mean, we've been paying this kind of money through the years when we provide health insurance to our employees, so this is not new money. It's just new to this firm, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Regents Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it is in the budget.
Right.
And we've actually pending the contract we've started, we've been working the last couple of months on implementing, we've got, they've got the files of our eligible employees, they've got the folks who've enrolled in the program, folks have started receiving their ID cards. So the ball's rolling on it and I've had a lot of really good feedback from employees who are very appreciative of the move, they're looking forward to it and I think they all feel like they're in very good hands. I haven't had anybody feel like, well, you know, they've been happy with the modA program. I haven't had anybody feel like, well, you know, they've been happy with the Moda program as well. I haven't had any, any folks calling and, and being upset about the change.
Yeah, they've, they've been good at communicating. I know I've, my cards came yesterday, second set of cards, I think. And they've been communicating all kinds of policies and procedures ahead of time, so. Good. And we did have good news on our contract this year too. I mean, we're going to actually pass some good savings on, so. Encouraging to all our employees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John?
If I might. Justine, I, I don't know whether employees understand because we've all been getting their cards in the mail, when they should start using those. I know the letter you get says you have to sign up or something. Can you explain that?
Yes, our open enrollment materials that went out to all employees, both via email and mailed to their home, explained that we were changing carriers. If somebody did, if somebody was already enrolled in, for example, the preferred provider organization, the PPO plan with Moda, and they just wanted to stay in that plan, only move it over to Regents, that they didn't have to do anything. So we're simply mapping folks who were enrolled in a like plan. Same thing with the high deductible health plan. Now, if they wanted to change and move from Kaiser to the Regents plan or move from the Moda, soon-to-be Regents plan to Kaiser, then they did have to complete an, an enrollment form and a process went for that.
Go ahead, follow.
My, my question is, when you receive those cards, they're not to use them until January 1st?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
But it says in the, right with the documents you get with the cards that you have to sign up.
I haven't seen specifically that.
Well, it says something about, and, and it's very difficult to figure out what they mean, that's why I'm asking the question.
One thing that folks do optionally sign up is to log on to the website so that you can have access to your explanations of benefits, you can also print off duplicate cards and things like that. So there is a, a registration, but I can check with, with Regents and make sure that the messaging on that is correct for folks, that if they're signed up, they're signed up.
So.
Well, it is confusing in what they're saying in there.
Oh, I just know my cards came, I'll read it and then I'll come in and teach you how to do it. You know how I am with technology. Okay.
I just have my simple question. Employees that have, say, ongoing treatment, how does that handoff happen? Will there be any issues there from one company to the other?
So we have a process through Regents and we've had a, a couple of folks take advantage of this, but there's a transition of care form that we have out on the, the benefits webpage that was mentioned in the open enrollment materials to folks. So if somebody's got some ongoing treatment, for example, they've got a surgery coming up early in the year that's already been authorized, or just maybe they're in chemotherapy or something like that, there's a form called Transition of Care that a individual can complete and submit to Regents so that they will know to reach out to Moda and obtain all of the information that, you know, maybe prior authorization, they'll go ahead and honor that. In most cases, actually in, in all cases that we know of, there won't be an actual provider change. So the, the physician that the individual's treating with will stay with that person and also be able to work with Regents. But we do have a formal process to make sure that any, anything that was authorized before January 1 through Moda will be honored through, through Regents and associated information if there was nurse case management or one of those other programs that the person was involved in will all transfer over.
That's all I've got, so. Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we approve of the provider agreement with Regency Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Oregon for $2,092,460 to provide, help, provide health insurance services Marion County employees.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job this year. Okay, now we're back to, it says legal counsel, but I believe it's under Board of Commissioners, legal counsel. Consider approval of an ordinance repealing Chapter 525 of the Marion County Code. Scott Norris. And this is under an emergency clause, if I remember right.
Yes.
Welcome, Scott.
Good morning. My name is Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. There are two ordinances before the board this morning, both of which relate to the results of the November election. The first ordinance is the proposed repeal of Chapter 5.25 of the Marion County Code. This chapter is the Medical Marijuana Dispensary Facilities Ban and Ban Exemption Permit Ordinance of Marion County. This ordinance was first adopted when medical marijuana dispensaries became legal in Oregon. It banned medical marijuana dispensaries without a county-issued permit, specified when medical marijuana dispensaries can, where medical marijuana dispensaries can be located and established regulations, for example, requiring background checks for owners, employees, and volunteers of dispensaries. In the November election, the voters approved the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries, so the ban provision in Chapter 5.25 is now obsolete. Also, as a result of the November election, the Marion County Code, the Marion County Zone Codes have been amended to specify where dispensaries can be located and to incorporate the regulations which were contained in Chapter 5.25 into the Zone Codes. Thus, it is recommended that the board approve this ordinance repealing Chapter 5.25 of the Marion County Code. And as the Chair has mentioned, this ordinance is proposed to be enacted by emergency procedure whereby the, the title of the ordinance is read twice, after which the board votes on the ordinance and then becomes immediate, effective immediately. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Pretty straightforward.
I don't have any.
Yep. Thank you. Entertained motion for emergency.
Chair Cameron, hope I'm reading the right word, I'd make a motion that we read by title only twice and a ordinance that repeals Chapter 525 of Marion County Code. Does that do it?
That's it. I'll second the motion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair will read the, the ordinance by title twice. An ordinance repealing Chapter 525 of Marion County Code and declaring an emergency. An ordinance of repealing Chapter 525 of Marion County Code and declaring an emergency.
And now Chair Cameron, make a motion that we approve the ordinance that repeals Chapter 525 of the Marion County Code.
And I'll second the motion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's done and you're going to sit up here and talk to us about, consider approval of an ordinance amending 5.30 of the Marion County Code. Thanks, Scott. Also by emergency, if I remember.
That is correct.
Okay.
This ordinance is proposed to amend Chapter 5.35 of the Marion, uh, 5.30 of the Marion County Code to remove the reference to medical marijuana businesses in Chapter 5.30. Chapter 5.30 was adopted to prohibit six different types of marijuana businesses in the unincorporated areas of Marion County, two medical forms of businesses and four recreational forms of businesses. This ordinance was referred to the voters on two separate ballots at the November election, one for the two forms of medical marijuana businesses and one for the four forms of recreational marijuana businesses. At the November election, the voters of Marion County approved the establishment, excuse me, approved the establishment of medical marijuana businesses and rejected the establishment of recreational marijuana businesses. In order to conform Chapter 5.30 of the Marion County Code to the result of the November election, it is recommended that the board adopt this amendment to Chapter 5.30 to remove the prohibition of medical marijuana businesses in the unincorporated areas of Marion County. And as mentioned, this ordinance is also proposed to be enacted by emergency procedure.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Any other questions?
I have no questions, so. So Chair Cameron, I'd make a, I'd like to move that we adopt the ord, read it right from there, same thing. We approve the ordinance that amends Chapter 530 of the Marion County Code.
Or my, twice.
And by title only twice, excuse me.
I'll second the motion to.
I'm not.
Read by title twice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Chair will read it by title twice. An ordinance amending Chapter 5.30 of the Marion County Code and declaring an emergency, second time, an ordinance amending the Chapter 5.30 of Marion County Code and declaring an emergency.
And now Chair Cameron, make a motion that we approve the ordinance that amends Chapter 5.30 of the Marion County Code.
And I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Code is amended. And our next item is, under Public Works, consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting zone change, ZC Case Number 16002 Lancaster Opportunities LLC, Clerk's File 5717. And Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Welcome.
For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an application to change a zone from commercial, retail to commercial general on about .8 acres located at 250 Lancaster Drive Northeast in Salem. The applicant proposed changing the zone from CR to CG to allow expansion of its automotive business from property to the north or for other uses that may be allowed in the CG zone, but not in the CR zone. Adjacent property to the east is a zone, single-family residential. All other surrounding properties are zoned, either commercial, retail, or commercial general. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on the matter on September 28, 2016, and on November 14 issued a recommendation to the board to grant the zone change subject to conditions. The conditions require the applicant to obtain any necessary permits, meet all the development standards in the commercial general zone, obtain any required permits from the city of Salem for sewer and water services, and to meet any Marion County Fire District 1 requirements. The board received the hearings officer's decision, hearings officer's recommendation, and held the application for the mandatory appeal period. No appeals were filed. Notice of the adoption of the administrative ordinance was made on December 14, 2016 is now before you for final consideration and adoption. The options for the board include, adopt the ordinance as written, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance for consideration, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Joe, I just have one without going through and re, maybe I couldn't find any way. Any public comment, any opposition at all, or anybody have any problem with this proposal?
There was no opposition from any of the neighbors, no, any of the agencies that were, that were notified. There was no opposition that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
The only question I have, under the conditions, Exhibit B, right? That's where the conditions are.
Correct.
We've had this discussion, so somehow we're going to, we're going to log those conditions and follow up in a tickler some way.
That is correct. And also, those conditions, the hearings officer brought those out forward, those apply when someone comes in to develop the property anyway, we go through those exact steps on every building permit that's, that's done.
It doesn't look like any of those conditions would be out of normal for any business.
That is correct. There's nothing special about this, those particular conditions.
Right, okay. Entertained motion.
I am just a little bit confused now, Gloria. This, this is listed as an ordinance and what are, what are we trying to do to approve it then?
This is not by emergency procedure, so you would just.
Just approve it and we'll see it again?
Correct.
Actually.
Is an administrative ordinance.
So we're likely to see it again.
It's a little bit different, so you just would be approving it today.
All right, then Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the administrative ordinance granting zone change to Case 16002 Lancaster Opportunities LLC, Clerk's File 5717.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, thank you. And the Commissioner was giving me a bad time about not having a Christmas tie, but I, I think it's kind of like a red tie. But Scott, I, I wanted to com, comment you on your great Christmas lanyard.
Certainly, that's bright and Christmasy, isn't it?
Yeah. Merry Christmas, Joe. Yeah. Okay, and I'll read the schedule. Wow. Finally, a short, mine's schedule's not as short as this one, though.
Mine is.
Oh. So today, excuse me, Friday, the 23rd, 9:00 a.m., SOAR graduation at Shemecata Community College, Building 6, 4,000 Lancaster Drive, Northeast. I will be there.
You've gone to several, haven't you?
Yeah.
Should I, I never have, should I be?
If you're around, it's kind of nice, there's, they got cookies and, and treats there and it's, it's pretty moving to see those individuals.
I've, I've heard that, I'm, I'm going to try, to be honest.
I don't know who the speaker is this time, but last time Commissioner Carlson gave a presentation and, and it was really, really well done and she brought up.
You're giving that speech?
No, not tomorrow, not that I know of. I'm always prepared if I'm called upon, though. And then on the 26th, the, we are closed for the holiday, which is Monday. Tuesday at 11:00 a.m., Marion County in a Housing Authority meeting, Housing Authority Board meeting and location is in the Silverton Conference Room here on the 5th floor at 555 Court Street Northeast. And Wednesday at 9:00 a.m., we'll be back here for our last board session of the year where I will attempt perfection for the last time and probably not get there.
I know. I'm just looking at this SOAR grad beings, it's listed here. Commissioner Carlson must be planning on attending.
She will not be there.
Well, it's already noticed anyway and I may show up.
Yeah. She, uh, she had, I told her that I would be there, but she's not going to be able to be there, but it's noticed. Yesterday, our jail tour was quite, I thought, very productive and hopefully we can get some things done over there that they would, would really help them with their operations and security. We can't really talk about them, but.
I don't know what really stands out. It's always interesting. First of all, the facilities always look great, well taken care of, recognizing that what was a new building isn't anymore. And I know we're do, we do constant work on it. Probably just getting ready to make the big change in, in parole and probation and, and the command centers, we're calling it. And I, I don't know exactly when that starts, but it's being planned and we'll make a big difference, I guess.
I think it's the spring, yeah. What else?
I still don't want to spend any time there, I know that, I always get that right away. But it's a well-run and efficient facility, that's what my impression would be, I guess. And I should say for, we're, we're required annually inspected or make a tour, I don't know if inspection's quite the right word. If, I should do the white glove thing next time, I'd make them nervous, wouldn't it? But it's always interesting.
Restaurant district manager now. I had one that brought out a white glove and would do that on the window seals and the base of the chairs and.
So I don't know where else to go, but this is a special time, right before Christmas. Pretty fun, all fun. I didn't go skating at the Oregon Garden this year.
Oh.
Well, I just don't bounce anymore, I don't know how to explain that.
When you fall?
Yes.
But they got those, with those little pink or orange.
I know, I know, but you'd go around a few times on those and what if. I know, I know, but you'd go around a few times on those, and what have you proved? Let's be serious.
You know, I would say, when you said skating, I was thinking of the weather we had this last week, and how, I think everybody that I'm aware of, that I've been in contact with, safely maneuvered through the weather. I went out to my Suburban yesterday, and I left the ignition key on all night.
What do you mean?
You know how you turn it, you turn it on to make sure, I always turn off my heater and everything?
Just the radio?
I just turn off all the power, right? Right, so I didn't know if I did, so I turned the ignition key back on, and sure enough, I hadn't turned off the radio and the heater, so I did that, and so everything...
Is dead.
Well, but I didn't turn the key back on, and I got in the house, and I go, yeah, I think I left the keys in the, in my car, and I, I mean, I'm out there, right? And so, I'll get them in the morning, I get out there in the morning, and the ignition key's on, so I couldn't drive.
You know, this might be a good opportunity, and I know you took a ride along with Public Works, but it might be a great opportunity to let the public know how, how much effort goes into keeping the roads clear, we had some complaints, perhaps, that they don't have a way of getting road information, we don't really get the coverage.
John left us, he didn't want to hear us.
He doesn't?
Yeah. So, I think that's a good point, I did Wednesday, because things got canceled Wednesday afternoon, so I was able to get over to Public Works Wednesday about 3:30, and got on a plow with Chad over there, Paul Sander, and was out till 11:30 at night, and you know what the hardest thing is, is that it's the traffic that he has to deal with, and...
Cars stalled or parked along the side of the road.
Right, or people stuck, all right, and he can't, you know, he can't get up there to get sand down, because there's cars all over, we, for example, we, we left the Public Works facility on Silverton and Corden, went down Corden, we went out Sunnyview, because the sheriff had called, there had been a car that had gone off, so we, they requested sand, so they worked with the sheriff, you know, when the sheriff had bad spots, so we went out and sanded and plowed out Sunnyview towards Hal Prairie, basically, and turned around at Hal Prairie, and came back, and that was the one, first thing he said, he says, "I won't go in somebody's driveway with these chains on and this plow, because I don't want to goof up your driveway." I mean, he's very courteous about what they do and don't do, and I thought, well, that's interesting, that's why he had to go all the way down to the intersection and turn around. And then we went and plowed the sheriff's facility, took a couple runs through there, we'd actually came back later that night and did it again, because it kept snowing pretty hard. But when we left the sheriff's facility, we were trying to get out south, he was in the South District, they call it the Salem District, we have two plows in each district, we have five districts, so there's 10 plows out there on Wednesday night, 10 operators.
And some others doing ice treatment, too, or is also...
No, no ice, no de-icing, he did de-icing the day before, they predicted the storm, and he was out de-icing.
I saw the strikes on the road, wondered when that went down.
And, and the other interesting thing that I learned was, you know, you're in, you're in this plow with this guy at nighttime, and it dawned on me halfway through, Chad works pretty much a Monday-through-Friday day schedule, he's not, he's not out there every night, and so when this storm comes, Public Works adjusts their schedules, and everybody, some volunteer or whatever, to work that late shift, because normally they'd only have two people on in the evening, and then two people on graveyard to go out and do calls and help with traffic.
Who's communicating with him, is it?
I would assume it's Evy and Jim over there.
It's not the 901 centers?
Oh, okay, once they get out, we have, our dispatch goes on at nighttime, instead of just during the day, the, Mandy, who's dispatching during the day, she stayed on and worked that night until about 11:30 as well, and so they're communicating to our dispatch, and Metcom could call our dispatch and say, can you get one of your plows to go out?
Not a problem here.
Right, and do this. But we could...
Can people report those, like, we have, and we've got to bring this out, because people, I didn't even know how to use it, report a pothole by computer that's effective, is that same thing, can they say...
I don't know about this, I don't know about the snow conditions, and, and here's what I would say, is that, because we've got 10 plows, and we've got, what, 1,200 miles or 1,100?
But who's counting?
Right, okay, and those guys, for example, on Wednesday night, we'd go and plow and sand, and we'd come back within an hour...
About two, three, oh, an hour?
An hour or two, and the sand's gone, it's covered or gone, so, and then the other, the other day, we got a, Sunday, I actually checked email, and had a lady that was wondering about Delaney, and Christie drove it, what, Monday morning, it was still messy, but our, we had a guy out who sanded it Sunday morning, and by that afternoon, she had some neighbor say, well, all the sand's in the middle of the road, well, it's because when, you know, when you drive, gravel goes out. So, it's a challenge for those guys, but the best thing is to stay home.
You were talking about Chad being courteous, and you told me this story, and I kind of chuckle, that people, I don't know what they're thinking, but you don't pass sanding trucks that are sanding, and if he sees it, he'll shut it off, but you won't be happy if he doesn't, is that right?
Yeah, he was, he, you know, I'd say, oh, now, why did you just shut off your sander? He says, because I got a guy that's passing me, and I said, well, maybe he'd love to pass you if you just left it on.
Yes.
And, and then people would get right up behind him while he was sanding.
Oh, and they're getting sprayed, too, then, huh?
And, and he would turn it off, because he thinks, oh, they're going to go around me, but I think if people would just be patient and let those guys do their jobs, so I didn't get to the part, when we left the sheriff's office, we were trying to go over Kubler to get out south, to do Liberty Road and Sunnyside, and those roads that are out south, and he couldn't get up over Kubler, because there was an accident, fire trucks, the freeway was closed, people were getting off the freeway at Kubler, so we turned left to go over Turner Road, to get the back way to Turner, and cars were trying to get up that hill out there by the prison.
Oh, yeah.
Sliding all over the place, so we couldn't get through, so we get out, and I said, can I get out and help with you? And he said, yeah, come on, so we're starting to push cars off to the side, so we could get through, and then while we're doing that, here comes a Salem fire engine with his lights on, he's chained up, front-wheel drive, I'd never seen a front-wheel drive fire engine, he's chained up, so we finally get enough cars out of the way, throw sand down, and
To help him get through.
Pull off to the side, so the fire can get through.
But he's probably going pretty good, I would think.
Yeah, I don't know where he was heading, but, so it was, it was...
Sounds like an interesting trip.
I kind of enjoy that stuff.
I know you do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was tired, though, because, because we started, I started Wednesday morning, like I do every morning, that, you know, workout at 6:30 in the morning, and by the time I got home, it was almost 1:00 o'clock.
Well, there's a couple possible snow forecasts yet in the coming days, maybe we'll get another opportunity.
Yeah.
And if you were licensed, he said he'd let you drive.
He asked me, an hour, an hour into it, he goes, do you have your CDL? And I go, no, and he goes, okay, well, you don't get to drive, and I go, so you would let me? And he goes, I probably would have let you try it someplace.
That's a little scary, we better, let's check that county policy.
I think I'll go get my CDL.
Yeah.
We'll talk to Justine, our Hispanic manager.
Yeah, let's clear this up, anyway.
All right.
I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and it is a happy time.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, and the one thing they invited me to come out and do, Evy did, she said, when we have flooding, and I said, well, let's pray we don't.
Yes.
Snow and ice is one thing, but flooding is not, not fun. Merry Christmas, and we'll sign off, see you next Wednesday. We're adjourned.